I guess we're ready to go, guys, huh? Okay, good evening, everybody. The Cape May City Planning Board is now in session. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act of 1975, adequate notice this meeting has been provided. Should any members of this board have reason to believe this meeting is being held in violation of that act, it should so state at this time. Hearing none, we'll start with a Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, roll call, Karen.
Yes, Mr. Bazare.
Here.
Mr. Jones. Mr. Riggs.
Here.
Mr. Crowley. Mr. Gorgone.
Here.
Mayor Malick. Deputy Mayor McDade.
Here.
Mrs. Reed. Mr. Lundholm.
Yes, here.
Mr. Beducis. Mr. Crippen. Thank you.
Okay, we have a minutes from October 14th for approval and or correction. Any corrections? Motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Maureen.
Second.
Thanks, Bob.
Deputy Mayor McDade motions. Mr. Gorgone seconds. Mr. Gorgone?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Mrs. Mr. Crowley? Mr. Lundholm?
Yes.
Mr. Riggs?
Stain, I was absent.
Mr. Jones? Mr. Bazare?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we have one application tonight, which is Swains Property Management LLC, 305 and 313 Jackson Street. Lot 1040 lots 2.01, 3, and 4. Minor subdivision and variance relief. Tony, might as well put your microphones up. Put your microphone on.
Okay.
By our way.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Anthony Monzo from Monzo Cadenet Stallos, representing the applicant Swains Property Management LLC in connection with a subdivision application, which is basically a lot line adjustment to correct an encroachment that has occurred for years whereby the home and driveway opposite or adjacent to Swains Hardware Store is actually part of the Swains property. And what we're trying to do is have that lot line adjusted so that driveway and garage associated with the residential unit is part of that property and Swains Hardware Store is a separate lot. So what we're looking to do is create that subdivision. It triggers variance relief because of several existing nonconformities. Swains Hardware Store, which you all know has been in Cape May for probably a century. And over the years, it's been operated by the Swains family. And the Swains family owns, Terry Swains owns Swains Property Management LLC, which own, previously owned the Hardware Store property and also the adjacent property. So when the Hardware Store was sold, this issue came up and as a post-closing condition, it was an agreement that we would come to this board to seek a subdivision so that we can clean it up going forward. The nonconformities that are triggered are listed in Mr. Hurliss's memo. I just want to go through them briefly and then I'll have Mr. Swenson, who's with me, provide testimony to support the variance relief. First, we have lot size. We're 10,000, first of all, lot four is where the house is. Lot three and 2.01 is the Hardware Store. So as part of this, we're consolidating three and 2.01, which will now be 3.01, and lot four will remain lot four.
Actually, I'm going to correct you there.
Okay.
We did receive a memo from the tax assessor who requested that lot four become 4.01. So a lot of these subdivisions happen and a lot numbering is wrong during the resolution. So I want the resolution to reflect that that's proposed lot 4.01.
You need a history.
Yes, exactly, so.
Thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, I just want to make sure before we start talking about it, it's proposed lot 4.01.
So the other one is 3.01?
Yeah, the consolidated one of lot 2.01 and three will be 3.01. And proposed lot four, the new configuration, will be 4.01.
So I'll briefly run through these with, and I'll start with the residential lot, which is proposed 4.01. First is lot size, 10,000 square feet is required. 2,0895 is existing. By extending that lot line, the proposed square footage is 4,137. So even though it's still a nonconformity and the nonconformity is being lessened, this is actually making it a better situation for that lot. With respect to both lot width and lot frontage, 100 feet is required. 42.9 exists and 58.95 is proposed. Again, making a nonconforming condition slightly better, which triggers variance relief for that as well. And lastly, lot coverage, and this is 80% is required. I, I'm not sure if it's 80 or 75. I think Craig's table has 80%, but then in his comments, he had 75%. We're going with 80. 80.4 is existing. 83.4 is proposed, not because there's any improvements being made, but because all the land that's moving over is all impervious cover. It, just by the math, increases the percentage of lot coverage. So even though that's a variance, it's not based on any improvements or any increase in impervious coverage. And then with respect to the Hardware Store itself, there are also some nonconformities that are also listed in Craig's memo. And specifically, the one that variance relief is needed for is side yard setback because the driveway and the garage are moving over to the residential property. The Hardware Store is only .7 feet now from the property line, whereas previously it was 10 feet, which is required in the zone. So that's a variance with respect to proposed lot 3.01. Where the garage and the driveway, both.
Tony, I can confirm it's 80%.
It is 80%, okay. So with that background, I'd like to have Mr. Swenson sworn in and I can have him place his credentials on the record.
I do.
So, Mr. Swenson, could you just place your credentials on the record and also your experience with respect to testifying in land use matters?
Okay, I have 43 years of land surveying experience. Excuse me. I have 43 years of land surveying experience. I have a degree in mathematics, one in liberal arts pre-engineering, one in civil engineering with a major in land surveying. I was gonna say, I have testified before. Yes.
Okay, so what we're seeking is variance relief, mainly under the C1 hardship criteria. I think it also fits under C2. But in this case, I think it's a classic hardship. Nothing's being done. And this is just to make a nonconforming situation better. It's never going to be fully conforming because of the circumstances that exist. And that is, that relief is appropriate where, in this case, by reason of the exceptional shape of the lot, the existing structure that's been lawfully constructed, complying with the zoning by just doing this lot line adjustment is not only difficult, it's impossible. So based on that, we believe a hardship exists. So I'm going to have Mr. Swenson address that. So first, you were involved in the review and preparation of this plan, Mr. Swenson?
Yes, I was.
Okay, can you, just to touch on, I gave the criteria for a hardship, but you, as a professional planner, can you elaborate on that and indicate why this would qualify for a hardship?
Yes, in this particular instance, as already been spoken about, the lot is very oddly shaped. The buildings that are on it have been there for numerous years. And the garage that we're trying to get incorporated with the lot has always been associated with the house that is on that lot. Due to construction over the years of the Swains Hardware getting quite large, it has incorporated part of this property just because of the way the original lot lines were. When it was originally all owned by one person, obviously, there was no issue. But now that they're looking to retain just the home and sell the Hardware Store, it's, it's creating a hardship on the homeowner themselves of the smaller lot by, you know, not, them not having the garage on their own property. It's definitely a hardship for the homeowner.
And do you see any substantial negative detriment?
I see no negative, you know, no detriment to the public. I see no negative aspects of adjusting the slot line because nothing's going to change, you know, physically.
And no substantial impairment of the intent and purpose of the zone plan?
No, if anything, it's actually helping the intent of the zoning plan by getting all the residential, you know, property onto the residential lot and keeping the commercial onto the other lot.
So in your opinion, this application and all the variances requested comply with relief under the criteria for the C1 hardship?
Yes, they do.
I can go through the C2, but I think this is a classic C1 hardship. I don't see the need to get into the purposes of zoning. So I have no further questions. We can entertain board questions and go to Mr. Hurliss.
I just have one question. I have background with Craig. If a residential property in a C5 zone was allowed use and Craig?
Yeah, so I'll put it, I'll put it on the record because it's a valid point that I wanted to make during my, my review. But, so in the C5 service district, the single-family dwelling is not a permitted use. It's an existing nonconforming use. Typically, if you were making that lot smaller, that would trigger a use variance. In this case, the lot that contains that nonconforming use is getting bigger. So therefore, it was my opinion that we don't need to address the nonconforming use. It's an existing nonconformity. None of the situations are making that worse. The lot is already accommodating that use.
Hence, hence it's in front of our board and not the zoning board.
Right.
Okay. All right, Craig?
Okay, I'd like to summarize my September 3rd, 2025 review memorandum. Once again, this project is located in the C5 service business district. You've heard testimony from the applicant that this is a lot line adjustment. There is no proposed improvements associated with this. The shifting of the line does not facilitate any new development. It's just to get the residential single-family dwellings improvements that they use now contiguous on the lot that they, that that will be associated with that use. So it's really a lot line adjustment. I'll roll into my completeness review under the map details required for minor subdivisions under letter M. We asked them to provide the lot numbering, and I've already talked about that, but we received the lot numbering request from the tax assessor. So as a condition of approval, proposed lot 3.01 and proposed lot 4.01, which will be the subject of these, should be revised on the plans in accordance with the tax assessor's request. That being said, Mr. Monzo has gone through the variances that are requested. There's really, the lot line adjustment really only creates or worsens one nonconformity. And that is with regards to proposed lot 3.01 for Swains. That lot line moves over closer to them and therefore, that side yard setback of .7 feet is worse than the existing conforming situation of 10 feet. But the benefit of that is that that garage and that driveway that are associated with that single-family dwelling are now on that lot. So I, I think that's a benefit as opposed to a detriment. This is also one of those eyeball tests when you're walking down the street. You wouldn't really know that that lot line is moving. Those improvements really look like they're associated with the single-family dwelling. All these years, I believe they were. This was kind of a surprise to me when I saw the subdivision come in front of me. But this lot line adjustment makes sense from that standpoint. So in reality, I'm not going to go through all of these, the chart on page three of six, but you're essentially, you're creating two lots and you're memorializing the existing nonconformities into the new lots. So you, for Swains Hardware, there's a building setback line, existing nonconformity, a rear yard setback, existing nonconformity. And then those two are existing, not being changed. The side yard setback is the one that's being changed. For the, for, that was for Swains. For the proposed dwelling, the nonconformities with regards to lot size, that's changing, but it's changing to the better. Swains is approximately eight times the minimum lot size in the existing condition. They're shaving some of that lot area off and making this, bringing this one better into conformity. It's a little, it's almost 30%, it's 28% or 29% of the required lot size. It'll now be 41%. So that's getting better. The building setback lines are existing nonconformity. Lot width, lot frontage are getting better. They're existing nonconforming as is. They get to 58.95 where 42.9 feet is, is the existing situation. Rear yard setbacks stay the same, but you're memorializing that existing nonconformity. And the side yard setback on the one side of three foot is an existing nonconforming situation. It's not being affected at all by this. And then the lot coverage is slightly increasing just due to incorporating a whole bunch of lot cover. That, that sliver of land that's being pulled into that lot is virtually all coverage. So therefore, it knocks that coverage up a little bit. So they're slightly over the 80% maximum where 83.4% is, is proposed. With regards to the general review comments, item number one was the only technical comment that we had, and that relates to the lot numbering. So we've gotten that addressed through the tax assessor's memo. They will be required to revise the plans as a condition of approval. Items two through eight should all be conditions of approval. They're all standard conditions for this type of application. I'll just roll through. We did receive the environmental commission report. That is dated 10/8/25. They recommended approval with no comments. The fire department recommended approval dated 9/15/25 with no comments. The police department recommended approval dated 9/11/2025 with no comments. The public works department recommended approval 9/15/25, no comments. Shea Tree Commission recommended approval 9/30, it looks like, 9/23/2025 with no comments. So that's a summary of my report and I'm happy to answer any questions the board has.
Anybody have a question?
I just have one question. The little strip there that leads back to that ramp, was that access to the Hardware Store? And will it still be access to the Hardware Store?
Right where the L5 number is on the driveway. I think everybody knows that the, there's the deliveries come from the back. It's a good question. There's a ramp, the ramp remaining there.
I mean, it's part, it's part of proposal lot 3.01.
Right, but how do you act, how, is it utilized physically? Because there's no, there'll be no access to it now.
Would Swains employees use that? Is there a door there? They would?
I'm not sure what you mean by there's no. I'm looking at from Jackson Street. There's a narrow walkway. Is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
Yeah, but there's a little, there's a little wall there that incorporate, that's incorporated around it.
I don't have the answer to that.
Doesn't the application have a photo of that? Well, we could probably clear it up that if that ramp is to be utilized, the easement would have to remain in effect. They're extinguishing.
A good picture.
Just that little, that little wall there would be the access to that ramp.
But the ramp is on the, on the Swains property.
That's correct. But how do you get into it?
There's, no, there's a, there's space. There's space between the, the store and the property line. I mean, that.
I think, that ramp is meant, if I remember correctly, I think the ramp is, like, if you're coming out of Swains and going, walking down that ramp, it's like, brings you to the surface. But you don't necessarily need to come all the way down to utilize that walled off space.
That's what I was gonna say. I think it's just for access.
Right, I think they come down.
It's like a little break area. It's like a little break area, yeah. I believe it's a little.
Yeah. So I don't, I don't think there needs to be any access easement or anything for that. I don't think, I don't think the traffic from, people coming out of that ramp are accessing Jackson Street.
Right.
It would only be people who work there anyway.
Yeah, it's like a little break area for the people.
Any other questions or comments? Nobody in the public, so there's no need to open that up. So we'll do a motion in court encompasses all the.
The motion, the motion I recommend to be made for how you vote is up to you, is a motion to grant minor subdivision with the associated variances outlined 1 through 3, 1 through 9 on page three of the engineer's report, subject to conditions 1 through 8 on the engineer's report. So moved.
Second. Thank you, Bob.
So Mr. Jones' motions, I'm sorry, I didn't catch you seconded.
No, Mr. Gorgone motioned.
Mr. Gorgone, you seconded? Okay, thank you. Seconded by Mr. Gorgone. Mr. Gorgone?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Mr. Crowley? Mr. Lundholm?
Yes.
Mr. Riggs?
This is incorporating the recommended changes from the tax assessor, correct?
Yes.
Then I'll vote yes.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Bazare?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's gotta be the shortest one we ever had.
Bill, I have a question for you. I know it might be too late to just point something out.
Oh, I had a question.
Tony, on this drawing, it says there's a one-story frame building. And then the picture, it's two and a half stories.
It's definitely two stories. I've been in it.
Should we just go like that?
That's the surveyor.
It'll be corrected.
It'll be, yeah, we'll change the text.
Do we need to put this on the record? What's happening?
New owners? Or is it the? Or is it the?
I was trying to see what he said.
That area in between.
No, there's another picture, I believe, that has that, but down here.
Yeah.
You still have this here.
So it wouldn't have gotten this far.
Can you put the mic on, please? Thank you.
Is this owner's gagliardi real estate LLC?
Yeah, that's Swains.
Yeah, we're good.
We had, we had their consent. I believe you submitted it with the application, and if we didn't, I'll make sure it gets in the file.
So Rich, do we need to include that in our minutes, that the applicant will supply revised plans to reflect the two and a half story as indicated in the pictures?
Well, I have to revise the plan for the last one.
I'm, I'm just putting it on the record, that's all.
No, no, I was just saying, I will take care of that.
Is that for the residence or the store? The two and a half story, the residence? Okay.
I'll put it in the resolution.
Thank you.
All right, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item we have is master plan consistency review of ordinance 584-2025, amending chapter 525 of the city zoning code to promote workforce and long-term housing opportunities in the C1 zoning district.
So, do you want me to?
Yeah.
So the recommendations from the planning board were sent to council. Council reviewed and adopted everything, and then, and also at the table discussed the location of the workforce housing within the C1 district. And at that time, we were coming back with the proposal to only incorporate it onto the Washington Street Mall. Council decided that they wanted it all in the C1, throughout the C1. So just as sort of an FYI and courtesy back to this group, letting you know that the ordinance has been revised and incorporates all of the other recommendations by the planning board, with the only change is that we will be making it for the entire C1 district, as is consistent with the master plan. So.
The board should revote whether they think that's consistent with the master plan.
Okay.
Right. I'll take it from here, I guess.
Yes.
That's okay? Okay. So I did not prepare a third review memorandum for this, because we've had three iterations of this, so we've thoroughly considered this. But the ordinance 584-2025, the fourth whereas, contains the exact language of the 2019 master plan reexamination, which specifically states comprehensive, excuse me, comprehensively reexamine and address standards for the C1 district. Availability of off-street parking in this area is streaming, lacking in ability to develop new parking is problematic due to land availability. Availability of workforce housing has also been cited as a concern. This area is pedestrian-friendly and complementary to apartments over commercial uses, which are permitted currently. Ability to convert unused areas above commercial uses has been curtailed by lack of parking. Relaxing or eliminating the parking requirement for apartment uses in this district should be investigated. Based on that language and based on the proposed ordinance, I believe the board can find this consistent with the master plan language and find it consistent with our master plan.
That part that you just read didn't say anything about workforce housing. Does that, what you just read, did that say something about workforce housing?
Availability of workforce housing has also been cited as a concern.
Now, this is not, while it's called workforce housing, it applies, the definition is broader. It's anything 90 days or more that's.
Well, the iterations of this plan have specified and defined what workforce housing will be considered.
And if I could just add to the conversation, because originally, I'm going back some time now, I was charged to do some research on what other municipalities have defined workforce, workforce housing. I've reached out to several municipal managers throughout the state of New Jersey, and they've all come back with basically, as you see fit. So I'm reporting back to the board that this was thoroughly discussed at council, thoroughly vetted. It's now back at the planning board, and I believe this is a good step forward in what I think we're trying to achieve here.
Yep. This is your definition of workforce housing. It's suited specifically to this town. Once again, I searched too. You know, I went through an exhaustive search to find a definition of workforce housing throughout the state of New Jersey. You may be the first ones that have a legitimate definition, so.
Where is the area expanded, Bill? The whole C1 zone. The Acme, where Elaine's is, where the bike rental property is, on the other side of Carpenter's Lane.
Across the street from us.
Across the street over here.
The overlay, the mall overlay.
There is no overlay.
That was proposed before, that's being eliminated.
I want to ask a different question. Mall overlay is what percentage of the C1 zone?
Probably less than 10 percent. Probably less than 10 percent.
Okay, so you're, this is a 90 percent expansion to workforce housing.
And that was the original condition. That was the original ordinance that we brought to this board, and.
Which is why we thought it was too much.
Yeah, and, but, yes, and, but all of the other conditions that were put forth have been adopted or being included in the ordinance. This was what council decided they wanted to have, that this to be consistent, rather have, rather than having, I think the term was used, targeted zoning.
They didn't want spot, it was brought up by a council member that they did not want spot zoning to be applied, and they wanted to be able to show that we're looking at the entire zone versus a small subsection of that zone. So this is kind of what, as the deputy mayor said, a compromise to come back to the planning board and say, hey, this is what council would be agreeable to. And at the end of the day, it is, as we said, it's council's ordinance, so it's really back to us as a courtesy.
Yes. They ultimately don't have to listen to your recommendations.
Correct.
You, they, you, you find either consistency or not consistency, but at the end of the day, if you make a recommendation, you're allowed to make recommendations, they're allowed to consider that, but ultimately, they decide how to create and enact an ordinance that effectuates your recommendation, or the planning board's consistency with the master plan.
So when it was brought to council at the last council meeting, it was considered, comments were made, and the approach of what they considered spot zoning was not acceptable, so that's why it's back to us to incorporate now the whole C1 zone. So like I said, at the end of the day, we can make the recommendations, but this is, in essence, what they are agreeable to.
All right. Well, and incorporating the other recommendations that this, this board made. No requirement for site plan development, no requirement for parking variances, that they would not have to undergo, you know, their inspections would be for fire inspection on a yearly basis, and all of the other things that we discussed. There were about four or five notification to anyone who currently had a short-term rental mercantile license.
Well, now, I wasn't aware that you had to have a license for your own rentals.
You don't.
So, so it's not, it's not related to short-term licenses, it's uses that are existing now.
That, that is correct, that anyone who currently has a property that is being utilized for rental, that they would be notified that there's a change, and they should keep their rental, their mercantile license up to date.
But they don't have to have a license?
For those who are currently have apartments.
Do it for less than 90.
Yes, yeah, that's who we're, we'll send out notifications to those individuals so that they are aware that they want to keep those license active if they continue to rent their properties, and don't choose to have them be considered workforce.
There's a specific section in this ordinance, section 52568, continuation and restoration, which has essentially the mechanism for an interested party to establish that that existing nonconforming use is, is valid.
Right.
And then there's an appeal process also indicated.
Which standard is, if I'm a zoning officer, and somebody comes to me and they have an apartment, or they've got a place that has a, has two rooms in it, that are 125 square feet each, how many, how many people allowed in a 125 square foot room?
Is that, is that the bedroom, or is that the whole space?
The bedroom.
Didn't we do this math last?
Yeah, we did.
Let's see.
So it's on number two at the bottom? Yep.
The last meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, there it is. Okay, so I'm going to read that paragraph.
How about the one before it, too?
Yep. Specific standards applicable to workforce housing are as follows. Consistent with the IPMC 404.4.1, each bedroom for one person shall be a minimum of 70 square feet, and any bedroom proposing two persons shall be a minimum of 100 square feet. There shall be no more than two persons per bedroom regardless of size. Overall, a workforce housing dwelling unit shall not be occupied by more occupants than permitted under the following formula. 150 square feet of habitable floor area shall be required for the first occupant, and 100 additional square feet of habitable floor area shall be required for each additional occupant.
So the second calculation involves total space as opposed to.
Total habitable area.
Bedroom space.
Yeah. Kitchen.
So I guess if you have a really big bedroom, that you're going to have to split it in half to get more than two people in it. Well, you know, this, I, we've worked on this, and let's, let's see where it goes. I mean, this, this is not going to, this is not going to create workforce housing, I'll tell you that right now. You've got to have financial incentives for somebody to be willing, that just, just, I mean, we're trying, and I, this is the first step.
And I think that's the message, Bill, that we are looking at something to have, hopefully get some interested parties, and I think that's the, really the underlying. Make this, you know, an area that would perhaps attract someone to take a look at it, and may want to do it, and see where it goes. It's not going to be the panacea, it's not going to, you know, be a revolution of changes, but I think it's an attempt for us to move in that direction. And may afford some opportunities to learn from it, number one, and number two, expand it to other areas that might be more conducive. But we don't know that until we start the process.
What is the appropriate venue to have a discussion on incentives, possible incentives to incentivize people? I don't think it's the ordinance, this ordinance per se, or maybe it is, but I agree with what you're saying.
Probably council. Probably council.
And we have talked about it a little bit, Bob, but at this point, we've been, we've been, you know, sort of trying to work out the details.
Yeah.
And then it goes on to, does that happen where, I mean, I know that the mayor has spoken, it's been in the paper, that he feels that this is a very important initiative.
Right.
In saying that, you know, you've got to be able to prove that you're, you know, interested in having this take off, so that's one area. The other thing is, you know, he does give updates once in a while. Now that we would have something on the books, it's to sort of engender that conversation. And people may look at properties they have and don't necessarily want to invest a great deal of money in upgrading the fixtures, but have accommodations to be able to say, you know what, if I don't have to go through all of the standard hoops, a parking variance is in site plan, but I've got some rooms, and maybe it works for me as an employer. I've got a business in town, if I've got accommodations that might be of interest to full-time employees who live here or want to live here, you know, anything's sort of possible, but without this framework, we didn't even, couldn't start those conversations.
This doesn't apply, that doesn't, that doesn't incentivize somebody who doesn't have existing space.
No, it doesn't.
No, I understand.
If you've got a building on a mall that has one story, if you want to add a second floor, you've got to go through the hoops and all that stuff, so it's not really incentivizing that.
But you also have to.
Incentivizing anyone who already has the space. Yeah, that's it.
You also have to have, have a finished product where the rent is affordable to the people that would be, be running this place, so you don't have a situation of trying to, you know, bring in a whole gang of people just to share the, just to share the rent. I mean, the people that are in the business are in the business to make money, they're not in the business otherwise. So without an appropriate incentive.
The incentive was no parking variance and no site plan review, and that may not.
That'll do nothing with the rent that get, as they're getting charged, unfortunately.
I can't disagree with you, but without at least putting something together, we may find in a year that we have to.
It's worth a shot.
Yeah.
And, and let's be reminded again, we are going to make recommendations, but at the end of the day, it's council's ordinance. So, you know, this is, this is, I think, what the deputy mayor's saying, and what the mayor has indicated throughout the process is, this is the step in the right direction.
Yeah.
We have to show the public that we're making a good faith effort in this. I think it's been widely reported on, so people, if you are an applicant coming to this board, you understand what our policy initiative is.
And Bob, we may very well find in the next year that we hear from potential landlords for workforce housing, and they make, it may solicit conversation about what else is needed, but.
I, I'm getting from this, this is pro-workforce housing, not anti-short-term rentals.
Right.
Yes.
This action actually precludes future short-term rentals in the C1 zone.
No, that's not really true, because if you have, you'd probably have to get a parking variance if you wanted, if you want.
You need to use variance.
Yes.
No.
Well, evidently.
The uses being, so.
Shall be limited to workforce.
And that's, I thought that was, I was surprised that everyone missed that, but if you look at page three, under the C1 primary business district, the use regulations, apartments above commercial uses is being stricken as a permitted use, and being replaced by apartments above commercial uses shall be limited to workforce housing. So you're taking out, so you would need a use variance in order to bring a apartment above a commercial use online that could be used for short-term rental that doesn't qualify as workforce housing.
But if you already have one, you can get a certification.
So the existing ones, right, can be grandfathered in, but to make new ones, you would need a use variance.
And that wasn't, that wasn't something that was added, that was in the original presentation, so.
So I just, yeah, I just want to make sure everyone knows that, that that, so you're not going to see someone come in, and we started seeing them, and my impression was that that was not looked upon favorably, or at least there was concerns there with that. But now that, that ability to have, to bring on a new apartment above a commercial use and not be able to control it with regards to how frequently that turns over, that's no longer a permitted use, if this ordinance is adopted. So I just want everyone to understand that.
Seems like a poison pill.
But we, this was not, this is not something new in this version, I just want to make sure that that's on the record.
Well, eliminating, eliminating the short-term rental part of it is new.
No, that was in what we reviewed the last.
No, we've talked about that before.
That was always the case.
But not to define it as such that you need a use variance to do it.
Yes, we have, we said it's not allowed.
If you cross, if you make it a non-permitted use, that's, that's why the other ones are saying.
That's why the other ones are grandfathered, because it's not.
Well, it was grandfathered because of the, I thought the parking.
No, it was, I mean, it was grandfathered because they don't want it.
By expanding this, not just the mall, but the whole C1, you've expanded the, the effect of the poison pill, because you, you're now capturing properties that were never originally intended to be part of this discussion, because this discussion started out and it was limited to the law.
No.
Dennis, microphone, please.
No, Dennis, the original ordinance that was first introduced at council and sent to this planning board was the entire C1. It was at the council table that it was asked to consider only the Washington Street Mall.
As a possible trial.
Yes. The council has decided, and asked for this just to come back for, sort of, the council has decided that it is now going to be expanded to the entire C1, and all of the other conditions that this planning board provided back to council were incorporated into the new ordinance.
The line, we started with the master plan language, which did restrict it to the Washington.
No.
It did not.
The, the master plan language always considered the entire C1. The first ordinance that draft that we saw was the entire C1. It then was tweaked with concerns and comment to only include the, the blocks of the Washington Street Mall.
As a trial.
That's, that's kind of the history of.
And then when it went back to council, talked about, and it was then changed at the table to then come back to us, that incorporates the entire C1, which is essentially exactly where we started at from the beginning.
And that's consistent with the master plan.
So property owners in C1, all of C1, are. So property owners in C1, all of C1, are now going to have to be informed if their ability to use their second and third stories is going to be-
Or, or add on to it.
Yeah. They're gonna have to be notified, I think. Otherwise, you're gonna have another problem.
What specifically requires that?
Yeah, I know, but, but, the, the property owners out there have no idea what's going, what's about to happen.
No, they're, they're, you're right.
I have a question for you, Bill. When you fill out-
Are you suggesting we ask council to notify everybody in the C1?
Yeah. Otherwise, you're gonna have a big room full of other people.
Well, it's kind of the same thing we did with the people affected by the HPCs wanting to expand their, their borders, we, we suggested they notify all those folks too.
They haven't been back yet, right?
Probably.
They haven't been back since then.
No.
So if someone has a residential rental in this zone, they fill out their mercantile license, they don't declare how they're gonna rent it, correct? They don't, right? I mean-
They do in some ways, and I can't remember exactly, but the form requires them to complete certain pieces of information, but I, I, I know where you're going with it.
I think it says less than 180 days.
Well, it's, it's, it says how many bedrooms you have now, how much square footage it is. So you have to indicate if it is a short-term rental on there, on the current application. But keep in mind, if you're not renting at all, you could just have an empty space up there. So you wouldn't necessarily be on a list for us to know whether, if you have a current short-term rental, I should say, we would know who you are. Just because you have a property somewhere in the C1, we wouldn't necessarily know that you just have storage space on the second and third floor. Because there's no reason for them to come to the city to notify us of that. Did that make, does that track?
When I did my mercantile licenses, I thought it was said less than 180 days. I don't remember checking anything.
I think it was 175.
We changed the application in the last two years. M-Track did that, and now there is additional information. You must indicate square footage, how many bedrooms.
I remember doing all that, I just don't remember, I thought it was 180 or 175 days. I definitely don't remember seeing it being 90.
Yeah, that's, that's new.
So how-
It's the recommendation of the city solicitor, so.
But I mean, so now it says not less than 90 days, but it doesn't declare, what if you, in the middle, you can, I don't understand how you're gonna track that.
Well, we haven't developed an application yet, so I, I don't necessarily think I can speak to that. That would be in part between the city solicitor and the city clerk, so. Once, once we had these conditions set, you know, we, we have discussed being able to track someone who is registering as a workforce house, housing property.
I just think it would be a lot easier and simpler if it just took that phrase out about short-term rentals. Because if they have a space right now, if they're creating a space, they'd have to get a variance for parking anyway,
Mm-hmm.
and you can turn it down. Why does it have to say no short-term?
Well, I can take that back to the city solicitor, but he was the one that recommended that language, so.
Well, can I make a motion that we vote to take that out?
So then are we changing the whole, the-
Because everything we just talked about is based on-
Well, you're making, then you're making a whole, I think, as the deputy city manager is saying, we're kind of making a wholesale change, and this has already been accepted, the original proposals to council.
Yeah, so-
You can make a recommendation.
You can, yeah.
You can make a recommendation, doesn't mean they have to-
No, it doesn't mean, right, we, we could vote no and send it back, because we want this changed, and they could change it, and that's fine.
Well, I mean, I don't wanna speak for council, but if you watch the last council meeting and the way that this was discussed, this is what they found to be acceptable from the majority, which is how it got back to here. So if we're gonna make any changes, we should go through all of the changes that we want to make, because we started basically with the same product. It was changed at a council meeting, brought back to us, which was the original product. So we're gonna play this ping-pong game back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. I think it's our charge to look at, is this consistent with the master plan and the policy initiatives that the city's trying to put forth in the future.
And Mr. Riggs, I, I seem to recall that Mr. Gillen-Schwarz stated that this was to come back sort of as a courtesy? Am I misunderstanding what was?
No, it's required to come back here, but, but, but because the changes were made.
Okay, all right.
But, but you don't have, the board, the council doesn't have to listen to her.
Okay, all right, I, I, you know, I apologize, Bill, I don't know.
The, the only other thing that I think's a little bit misleading is, it couldn't be, it couldn't be named workforce slash long-term housing, something that doesn't have that, that aura that it's only workforce housing, that, that kind of-
Somebody may want-
Again, if you wanna put something together and give it to us to send back, and I will-
Just something to let you know, it's not, it doesn't just apply to-
Bill, and, and, and if I could just talk to that for a second, and if you watch the council meeting and you see the city solicitor, Mr. Gillen-Schwarz, speak, I think it's by design to call it workforce housing, otherwise it's losing the essence of what I think the policy initiative is, which is to encourage people to start a family and start to-
To live here.
To live here, exactly.
Well, the other thing is to-
You make it long-term, workforce slash long-term housing.
Well, also, Bill, you might, there might be opportunities in the future.
It's in the title.
Long-term's in the title, thank you.
We have a whole definition of workforce.
It's in the title.
It's in the definition.
It's in the definition. And can I also say that having something that includes workforce housing affords us an opportunity, should there be any kind of funding available in the future, to engender and, you know, a community to invest in this?
Excuse me, everyone, excuse me. Excuse me, everyone, there are so many conversations, we need to make a record.
All right, everyone, let me just, all right, hold on a second, guys, let me rein this in a bit.
Would like to speak?
We have, we have, there's a statute that tells us what we're supposed to do, okay? Your board engineers read to you the master plan. We don't get to redraft that right now. That's the master plan. Your question is, is this consistent with the master plan? You can vote yes, you can vote no, or you can say why you think it's inconsistent with the master plan. But we're not ordinance drafters, okay? We're not, we're not consulting on drafting necessarily, we're saying, is it consistent? Is it not consistent? And if it's not consistent, we say why. And then what they can do is, as I understand the ordinance, or the statute, they can do what they want, but if we say it's inconsistent, they have to make a specific finding on a full, a majority of their full board, or full committee, whatever, as to why they disagree with us and why they're doing what they're doing. That's how this works, so, you know.
Does anybody think this is not consistent with the master plan?
Does the master plan say anything about no short-term rentals on C1?
No, it's silent on that issue.
Then it's not consistent with it.
I didn't hear what you said, Rich.
If the master plan doesn't say no short-term rentals in C1, then it's not consistent with it.
Well, actually, what it says is that you're allowed to have apartments above commercial uses. So let's just focus on what we're talking about first. This is not a residential zone. So it allows you to have certain uses above commercial uses. So this only applies to, as I understand it, apartments above commercial uses, because other apartments aren't permitted. There's not supposed to be residences in your C1.
Correct.
That's the starting premise here. So all we're talking about, those limited instances, which I think are probably mostly on the mall, of apartments above commercial uses. And if you have one of those now, and it's a short-term rental, you can do that indefinitely just by paying attention and confirming that you wanna have that forever. It's that simple. All this is doing is saying that if you're gonna create new ones, then they need to be consistent with this ordinance, which this ordinance is designed to make it more likely to be workforce housing, because that's what the master plan says you want. It doesn't mean it's definitely going to be, okay? And it's, it's gonna be, it can be anything over 90 days, so they can have 100 days, they can run it out for the whole summer, right, to whomever they want.
That's gonna be harder to get workforce housing.
And that, Rich-
Okay, but, I don't-
Requires a use variance.
I don't vote, I'm just trying to get everybody to vote on what you're supposed to vote on, and think about what you're supposed to think about, how you think about it, what you think about it, I don't particularly care. So if you say that this is not consistent with the master plan, because it's not gonna create workforce housing, then you can say that, and they can ignore you. But that's, that's what it is.
The master plan, actually, if we read it again, I just read it three times, it actually is talking about the parking problem. And it, and then, then it ties the parking problem with the possibility of having an undefined thing called workforce housing in apartments above the commercial. But it's not talking about any kind of a, a policy to-
All of those things were discussed and rolled into that one recommendation.
Right.
So I disagree with the fact that it didn't involve workforce housing. We're, that, there was a long discussion during the master plan process about work, availability of workforce housing. It ended up in this recommendation, as did the relaxation of parking standards to try and encourage that workforce housing. So I, I think they were both part and parcel of that recommendation.
And yet there's no, no, no part of the master plan, other than that sentence, that talks about what workforce housing is.
No, I have to boil, so-
Or how much we need it, or how many, how many, how many people we need to be workforce housing.
I have to boil down these long-term discussions into recommendations. The planning board, that, that was the language that I thought enveloped what the discussion was and what the findings were, and you guys voted on it in affirmative. So that's what we're stuck with. That's what we have to evaluate, whether this ordinance is consistent with that or not.
And so we then drafted an ordinance which defined workforce housing, which definition is now coming under some kind of revisit, revisiting here at the board.
It's, it's, it's meant, it's meant to expand, expound upon the concept that's in the master plan. What's in the master plan is not ordinances, it's the concept.
But you, I, you, you seem to be saying, if I can hear you right, you seem to be saying that workforce housing is an inappropriate term. You want a broader term which covers other things.
I wanted, I wanted to not have that connotation strictly for boys.
Yeah, that's what I thought you said.
It says long-term also, doesn't it?
Well, the, 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 no, it doesn't, here it says workforce, workforce housing.
In the title of the ordinance, it says, "To promote workforce and long-term housing opportunities in the C1 zoning district," and it says it further down as well.
But it doesn't say that, it doesn't say the definition, the definition in the ordinance is, is, is gonna be workforce housing. It's not gonna be workforce and long, workforce and long-term housing. But I mean, it, it's not, it's not-
So you're just saying we need to make a, we need to make workforce slash-
Yes.
Well, anything over these, this, that fits in this criteria would be considered long-term or workforce. You could just change the subtitle.
If you just change the title.
Well, yeah, workforce slash long-term.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
That's, it's a connotation, it's a connotation.
I understand that, yeah.
You're talking about where it says new language?
Yes.
That, that heading there.
Yeah.
So just by changing that, by saying workforce and long-term housing, which is now consistent with the title of the ordinance?
Yeah, and I can, yes.
Which includes, you know, workforce and long-term housing opportunities.
It does, it says, "It is not intended to limit long-term housing opportunities only to employee, only to employees of the owner of the building, but to encourage places of residence generally through duration and residence requirements." It's really, quite frankly, it's in there.
Yeah.
In the second paragraph, in my opinion.
On page two.
Yes, sir.
When this ordinance passes, please notify the people in that zone.
They will be, it's not that bad.
Thank you.
So we'll, we'll send a recommendation to council, they notify everybody if it's something they want to-
And, and I just wanna clarify, when you're saying notify everyone regardless of the fact that they have a, a property that's under any rental condition, because we don't know them all.
You're not gonna parse through all that, just, just, you've got tax records rolls up, so.
Okay, I just wanna be clear on what it is, yes. Well, Mr. Riggs, we'll have that discussion with the city clerk and the solicitor.
Yeah, actually, because there may be people who own a, a property that, that they'd like to convert to a workforce housing.
Sure. That's what we hope.
Possibly.
Rich, did I hear you say, Rich, did you say this only applies to new apartments that are being created?
No. It only applies to things that aren't currently being used for, I'll call them short-term rentals for fear of another where, or something other than long-term rental. If, if they can establish what they're currently using for that, then they get grandfathered. If they can't establish they're currently using that, then no. So if it's currently an attic, or it's being lived in by someone.
However it is shown currently on their, whatever, in their property jacket is how it would be taken forth into the future, correct? In terms of-
Well, this says, this says they have to notify the city.
Yeah, they go in, they, they can go in, it's in here, it says, from what I recall, it says, there's two ways you can-
They have to proactively come to the city.
Right, correct.
There's two ways you can do it, you can pro, you can come to the city and seek a certification that you are a, that you are using it for a short-term, I'll call it a non-workforce, long-term rental currently. You're running an Airbnb, okay? You can go in and prove that, and then you get a certification that you continue that. Or you can do it the hard way, and if it ever comes up, you can try to prove, just like anyone else can prove, that they are a pre-existing non-performing use. Like they can, we don't, we actually hear those all the time, we wanted to.
Right. So, so just to backtrack for a second, so I'm gonna probably, I'll have a conversation with the city clerk, but because, just to understand, it's going to be for, everyone in the C1 zone will be notified of, of this. So probably the more appropriate person would be the zoning officer, and, but I'll work that out internally on who's gonna notify them.
Well, first of all, just notify everybody what's happened.
Correct. Yes, so I'll work out internally on who the-
A letter from the tax assessor's office is probably gonna cover everybody, regardless of their current conditions or their current status as a landlord.
Exactly, I just wanted to make that known at the table.
And that, and that will also capture the number of residential ratables versus commercial ratables from the tax office.
And just, Craig, to ask you again, it says nothing-
I don't mean by that.
It says nothing about no short-term rentals in the master plan.
What's that?
The master plan mentions nothing of no short-term- We never discuss short-term rentals during our reexamination. So there's no language for or against short-term rentals.
Got it.
Okay, all right, just, let me understand this thing that we've been giving here. Is this the, I'm looking at the right thing, is this the ordinance itself? What is the actual ordinance?
Yes.
This is the ordinance.
Then page five of this, of this packet that we have. Section four, courtesy notice.
Yes.
Section one is to change the definition.
I'm just focusing, focused on section four.
Okay.
It's talking about overlay in Washington Street Mall workforce.
Right.
But then does that apply anywhere?
That's correct.
But that's gonna be changed to being everywhere in the C1.
Because we're, we're having that-
That's, that, that, I'm gonna start out right away, yell that.
Yeah.
Section four seems to still be directed to the Washington Street Mall only, and I assume you're gonna correct that to be the whole C1.
That is correct, Mr. King, because we are making that recommendation now at the table.
Okay.
And the whole overlay comes out of this thing. Everybody, you understand it all now, do we? We're proving this, we're proving this with a, with a caveat that the, that the heading would be workforce slash long-term housing. We're also asking council to notify anybody affected by this, anybody in the C1 zone, to let them know that this is happening, that this, this change is being proposed.
Yes.
So, so within this ordinance though, the, back to what I was talking about earlier, so because we're changing it from just the Washington Street Mall, that's why the city clerk was gonna notify the Washington Street Mall from the mercantile process. So within this ordinance, we should change, rather than the city council hereby directs the city clerk to provide a courtesy notice, we should direct the-
The tax assessor.
Whoever, I'm just saying-
The appropriate city administration personnel.
That's how-
That's all, yeah, and then to all property owners.
Yes.
Yeah.
Not just mercantile, no, not just-
No.
Agreed, but that's why it was originally the city clerk. So I, to the deputy mayor's point, it should just say to the appropriate-
City administration.
You know, as directed by the city manager.
Yeah.
That, that's you. Craig, that's what, that's what you're being told to do.
I'm just providing my recommendation.
You're just gonna get the tax rolls and you're gonna send a letter to everybody in the town.
I just wanted to make sure, because sometimes- I just wanna make sure, because sometimes when ordinances are introduced, adopted, and then they're implemented, sometimes the staff comes back and go, well, wait a second, the staff comes back and go, well, wait a second, why, why am I called out to charge this, this initiative? I just want to make sure that we're consistent when we're...
Well, we, we have to clear that with Paul, too, before it gets presented to council, so we'll, we'll...
Yes, so we'll just say the appropriate authority as deemed by the city manager.
This is why the city manager has almost boundless authority under our constitution, so he can figure it out.
Okay.
All right.
I think so.
Last thing, Craig, can you help me with this? I have something in my head, um, this is more my litigator head than my zoning board head, but I thought there was a requirement that if you're changing a use in a zone, although then through the master plan process, you're supposed to give some kind of notice to people in the zone. Am I totally making that up?
No, there, there's municipal land use law notice, so like this, this, this whole ordinance is a zoning change.
Yeah.
So there is municipal land use law language that says you, they have to notify, and they have to do it in accordance with municipal land use law.
Yeah.
It, it's, it's effectively, I know there's publishing in the paper, in the official paper, I don't know what, I don't know whether there's anything more required, because I usually am out at that point, and it, and the administration takes care of that stuff, usually the clerk.